The time is 6:00 PM. I do see us all here. All right. Thank you for attending our regularly scheduled town council meeting. Today is Monday, February 7th, 2022. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Councilmember Mendoza. Councilmember Neil. Councilmember Hughes. Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Anderson. Vice Mayor Cortez. And Mayor Walter is here. At this time, we will stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Okay, at this time, we will go ahead for our first call to the public. I'm going to switch over the view to participants. If you are a participant and you would like to speak during this call to the public, please go ahead and click your hand button. I see Tabitha and Ian. How are you this evening?
Good, how are you doing?
Good, Mary.
Good. How are you tonight?
Good.
The kids are sick, so they've been home all day.
We hope they feel better. How can we help you this evening?
So I'm trying to start my own firearms-related business. I received a phone call today from the ATF investigator doing the background work to apply or not apply, or to approve my federal licensing to do firearms and gun-related business from home. She called me because apparently she's unsure if the town can, whether or not, allow me to do what I need to do. My question is this. I applied for a business license through the town two years ago, and I was granted a business license to do this type of work because I need to get licensed before I can get my federal licensing. So I applied for a license two years ago. I was granted a license and I renewed it. And then she calls me today and says, well, the town's not even sure if you can do what you're asking to do. So my question is, so I paid the town more or less $100 for a license that I'm not even sharing, can use or even have? And she went further on to say that when she was asking the zoning people and the other licensing licensing people from the town, they were even unsure what I was even applying for. So essentially, I was granted a business license and no one knew what I was even doing. Furthermore, no one even called me to ask what I am doing. So my question is, how did I get a license if no one knew what I was even doing in my own home?
That's an excellent question. I am going to set up a meeting with you, with our interim town manager and with any other department head that needs to be present. So can you please give your number to Lisa Garcia so that way we can reach out to you and set that meeting up?
I spoke with them today just to get the Zoom set up for them, and I'm happy to reach out and talk to them. So thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Say hi Gavin.
We'll definitely figure out what's going on and work to resolve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else that would wish to speak at this time? There will be a second call to the public. I see Roger Beatty. How are you, Roger?
I'm well. How are you, Madam Mayor?
I am doing well. Thank you so much for asking.
Okay, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members, Roger Beatty, Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to, I just want to say thank you to everything that everybody's been doing. We're kind of in the middle or coming to the end of the rehabilitation grants and the facade grants have have been done and it's really making a big difference on Main Street. And I've been getting a lot of compliments on it and a lot of atta boys, which I've been blaming the town for. So it's a great thing to see, and I think we've talked about it a number of times, that the businesses are really are really picking up on Main Street and hopefully that'll be a big thing towards all of town. But main reason I'm talking tonight is that the chamber is having their membership meeting tomorrow at lunch. I think some of the council may already be going, but I did want to give an open invitation to the council and the mayor. If you'd like to stop by, we're going to kind of talk about the year where the chamber's been for the last couple of years and where we are and where we're heading. So it's hopefully going to be a nice lunch at Matt Althos at 11 o'clock and or 11:30, excuse me, and just wanted to pass that invitation to the five of you. So thank you so much for letting me speak. Have a good night.
Thank you so much. Have a good night. Definitely appreciate it. Is there anybody else that is on that wishes to speak at this time? All right, I do not see any hands up, but we will have a second call to the public at the end. So there will be a second opportunity. At this time, we'll move into item number six, which is presentations. Six A is for the second quarter fiscal year 2122 presentation. At this time, I will queue up Mr. Carl Dudding.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to start a screen. Is that up there? So as you stated, we're going to look at Q2 and for FY22, and this will cover July through December. So we're 50% done with the year. We'll start off with the general fund revenue. These are the six major revenue sources that fall into the general fund. We'll start off with the city sales tax. And last year at this time, we had 1.2 million. And this year, we have 1.6. And this is mostly driven by online sales. Everywhere people are moving to the web for sales and we're seeing that. We budgeted 2.4 for the year and we expect to come in at probably 3.1, and that could change. Property taxes, 629 last year, 668. It's running in with trend. Our forecast and budget are the same. Billing permits, 577 versus 674 last year. Our forecast is right in line with budget. And I looked at July or January numbers, excuse me. And when I add January numbers versus last year, that cuts that 100,000 variance down to about 40,000. State sales tax is 1.6 versus 1.4, and our forecast is in line with budget. State income tax is 1.7 versus 1.9. And our forecast is in with budget. We knew this year state income tax was going to come in about 400,000 lower than last year. So that's in the budget. And our auto license tax is 891 versus 901. And again, forecast is going to come right in line with budget. The general fund expenditures this year is 7.6 versus 4.8 last year. Our forecast is in line with budget. And if you recall, last year, we had the Arizona Cares grant that took care of the police and fire salaries and wages. So we relieved last year. So we're in line with budget. Our other major fund revenues is our general capital fund. This year, we're at 603,000 versus 1.3 last year. And checking the tax income revenues, it appears that a lot of businesses haven't filed their December and some didn't have their November. So we are going to monitor that, but right now, we expect our forecast to hit our budget. HERF revenue, if you recall, this year, we budgeted or we broke out our TET tax from the HERF fund for a better clarity. So this year, we're at like 1.7 4 versus 1.8. So we're right in line. Forecast and budget are right in sync. Water fund, 2.2 versus 2.4 last year. And on the sewer fund, a 1.8 versus 2.0. So it's slightly down year over year. We're expecting to come in at target. I wanted to point out that, so we're at 2.2 on this and our forecast is 11. These numbers in the water and sewer fund have WIFA loan bond proceeds. If you remember, we went out and got two loans for the water and sewer from WIFA. And as our projects, the expenditures for these projects come online, we will return and in return request funding from WIFA, and that'll increase our revenue. So we will, our revenue for our enterprises funds will cover our expenses. Sanitation fund is trending in line slightly over last year. The other major fund expenditures. So this year, we have a 4.9 forecast, a 4.9 budget, well below spending, but through as the projects come online, we'll see that number increase. The HERF fund expenditures, same thing as the revenue, you have to add the HERF and the transportation tax. So we're slightly lower in expenditures and that's, I assume, projects will come online in the second half of the year. Our water fund and sewer fund has the same WIFA fund factor that these numbers are inflated. So we will be in line. Expenses for our enterprise funds are below revenue. So and that's a positive thing. Sanitation fund is slightly below last year. Our total cash in bank year to date through December is 90.6 million. That includes our operating fund, credit card account, our investments with the LPIG, PFM, and then the police evidence account. Some of the things we're working on in the department is our permanent base adjustment analysis. Becky is in progress and she will bring that to council in March. FY2223 budget is in progress. We have three RFPs out on the street that were approved, the odd development impact fee study and our utility rate study, and hope to bring those to council in March for award. And our water smart project is complete. We can finally put this item to bed. I know it's taken two years. Every water customer in the city received an email or a letter in their post or their mailbox inviting them to participate in this free tool. And the first two weeks, we had about a 9%. We're up to about 11% now. The letters went out in January 10th through the 13th. So we're excited about that. It's really helping our customers. And, you know, we hope to get this above 50%. The company says if you can get to 30%, you're doing well, but we're really pushing that. And we spoke with Jeff last week and he plans to put this on Facebook periodically and remind people to sign up. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Council, please go ahead and raise your hand if you have any questions or comments at this time. All right, I'm not seeing any, so I want to thank you, Carl. Excellent update and presentation.
You bet. Thank you.
Our next presentation is item 6B, and this is the Downtown Events Assistance Program Spring Update. Ms. Allison Fleece.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council and members of the public. This is an update on the Spring Downtown Events Assistance Program. Applicants or applications are accepted throughout the month of December. And anyone hosting an event downtown or at a town facility throughout the months of January through June were encouraged to apply for this assistance. Previous event producers were notified of the application process. And the Downtown Events Assistance opportunity was published in the Florence reminder as well as on the town's social media page. The town budgeted 12,500 to assist applicants with the Spring Downtown Events Assistance. And, excuse me, the town will assist six events this spring. The total requested amount that we received was 11,500 from all applicants. And we will, again, be assisting six, six events this, this spring from January through June. Those, those events that we will be assisting include the Rail 3 Ranch Rodeo, the Ernest Talks from the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce, the Farmer's Market, the Car Show, the Florence Music Festival and the Battle of the Bands Florence Music Festival that's happening this Saturday. And with that, I will take any questions.
All right, council, if you have any questions regarding these items. I don't see any questions, but I want to say thank you for, you know, going ahead and facilitating out the program. And we continue to hear great feedback about the events that are happening and how there's always something to do in Florence. So that's very exciting.
Thank you.
All right, we appreciate that update. Item number seven is our consent agenda, and all items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is the acceptance of the expenditure limitation report dated June 30th, 2021. Item B is authorization to enter in an intergovernmental agreement with Pinellas County for election service for the 2022 election cycle. Item C is approval of the award amount of $5,000 for the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce Downtown Events Assistance Application Spring. And item D is to accept the register of demands ending December 31st, 2021 in the amount of $3,418,608.13. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your consent agenda. If anybody would like anything removed, seeing none, we need a motion.
A motion, we approve the consent agenda as read.
We have motion and second, all in favor? All opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. Moving on to item eight, new business. Eight A is discussion approval disapproval to discontinue the use of revised public service request system and revert to online form submissions until a suitable alternative can be provided. Mr. Trenton Schaefer.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you. The item I'm presenting tonight is the update on our revised public service request system. Provide insight on how the project's been going, obtain feedback from council as well as a direction from council on providing this service going forward and what that looks like. From the get-go, our idea was being able to give citizens a more constructive and rich way to communicate publicly, the ability to go online easily, submit any issues, complaints, accommodations, anything like that quickly and easily, and also track and be able to track those issues easily as well, right? So we opted with the revised public service request system mainly because of its feature set and its price point. We reviewed the product in length with our PIO at the time. We felt it was going to be a good viable product. We demonstrated the product, I believe, at the March 15th, 2021 council meeting. And then shortly thereafter, in the first week of April, went live with the system. So since going live in April 2021, 75 requests have been generated through the system. And to kind of give you an idea of what that would look like, about half of those are through our streets department for streetlight outages, potholes, weeds. And then the next quarter of that would be through parks maintenance, typical issues with, you know, our lawns or sprinkler systems, irrigation systems at our parks, or maybe possibly an issue with the Ramada. I think there was a couple of those. And then just a handful of other issues, a couple of citizen complaints, some facility concerns, code compliance issues like junk in lots and yards, right? So over the course of that time, like I said, we had 75 issues submitted. We're averaging about eight per month. And during that time, we encountered a few issues with the system. So we had some issues with the map and satellite button. I'll share my screen here momentarily. I'm sorry, let me pull that up. We had some issues with the map and satellite button being hidden behind the navigation bar. Users weren't able to click it. It didn't defeat the functionality of the system. You just couldn't switch between standard street view and satellite view. Some department configuration issues that weren't ideal, but still made the system usable or didn't make it unusable. And then the biggest issue was there are some service issues. So the way this system works is revise, host the system in their servers, and we publish it to our website. And then we supply links that take you to the request system. So when you click those links, they're individually set up per department. Now, it's kind of the configuration issue I said wasn't ideal. Is this has to be configured per department. So we have to have a link for Public Works. We have to have a link for Fire. We have to have a link for Administration rather than an all-inclusive system where you can go to just a single link and report issues. In a way, it was kind of good because it gave us a layer of separation. So it kind of depended on how we looked at it. And overall, we felt it wasn't detrimental to the system and it seemed to work. So what would happen is those links, you have to publish them for them to be live. And we could go on the back end, make some changes to the system and republish those changes. Those links periodically would become unavailable. You click the link and the site wouldn't come up and say the service is temporarily unavailable. You need to republish. So we worked with the revised team and we thought we'd resolve that issue sometime around July of 2021. And then it started to creep back in in the later months of the summer, all the way through into October, to the point where the system would completely go downtown-wide. Every department, not just administration might be down or Public Works might be down. The whole system was down. So we knew we had a big issue. So we worked with the revised team. It took about a week's time to get those issues sorted out. They finally found the issue and were able to overcome the issue and get our service back up and running and keep it 99.99% uptime. So after all of that, those shortcomings, we generated some reports for council and for staff. And we found that the reporting features were lacking some information that our council and the administration might be wanting to see. And that was the detail level of the actual issues. So let me share my screen and I'll show you what that looks like, just so I can paint the picture better. Sorry, should have pulled that up first, Mayor. Getting ahead of myself. Let's go to here. All right. Can you see my browser window here?
Yes, but it's at a like distance.
Yeah, so I have a 49-inch big screen that I run this on, so it's probably too high resolution. Let me get that squared away real quick. I'll pull that back up. Let's just share the whole screen. Any better?
Not yet. There we go.
Yeah, we can see it. It's just.
A little small?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Let me see if I can work through that issue while we do the meeting here and see if I can make it a little larger for you to view. We'll work through it the best we can here. I can send these over to you as well, so you can, you can take a look at them. What we're looking at here is the incident report that's generated out of the system. And so this is a report from the Public Works Department. And basically, you can see the department's Public Works, what the status of the issue is. Is it closed, resolved, currently being worked on, freshly submitted? Have we acknowledged the issue? Date and time submitted, the date and time we acknowledged the issue, who it's assigned to, the last time the issue's been updated. And then the typical public views, how many times the issue's been viewed publicly, how many times users have upvoted that issue to be fixed. Say somebody went to the site and was going to report a pothole, sees there's already one reported at that address, so they could just upvote it and say, yeah, I agree, let's fix that. And that's kind of the gist of what you would see on a report. What was missing was the detailed information in the report. Let's see if we can zoom this back out. And it was missing what we could see on the back end. And again, you see all the same information, who it's assigned to, who submitted it, what department, so on and so forth. But this is unwieldy, sorry. But we could also see that, hey, this person said that there was potholes or damage to the roadways. And additional information provided was that the asphalt was coming up. So that little piece of information there, which is very important, was not generated in the actual reports. Again, staff can see this on the back end. We can still resolve the issues that our citizens had submitted to us, but it just didn't give us the level of detailed reporting that we were looking for. So let's close that back out. So this is our existing public service request system. Again, you get a map view. We can now toggle between map and satellite accordingly. That was the issue I was talking about. Not a showstopper. And we can see the current issues that are acknowledged and existing right now. We have two issues in streets. In the last 30 days, there's been 15 new tickets, 15 resolved, 31 acknowledged, which is because there was an internal ticket submitted. So it doesn't add up on this screen. So it's one of those other small little inconsistencies we were finding. You can see how many have been assigned, how many are in progress, so on and so forth. And then you can still click on those issues and see the details of them, what was reported. Again, there's a dozen abandoned vehicles, two trailers boats, jet skis, RVs stored here for a week and over the weekend, somebody reporting an issue. So overall, the system works pretty well, but we're finding that there's, there's just some inconsistencies with what we're seeing. We had some support issues going through it. It was a little rocky. And we know there's, there's better services out there. And that's not to say that we wouldn't want to use this service and that it's not useful. It's just to give you an update on our experience with it. And I know some of you council members have submitted issues through the system as well, since it's incarnation. So I'd really like to get any feedback you would have to offer in that regard. So moving forward here, let me stop this because I cannot get back where I'm at. There we go. Okay. So our annual fee for that software right now is $2,950 for the fiscal year. That renews at the, at the end of this fiscal year, right at, right at the end of June, beginning of July, we'll start our new fiscal year renewing that service. And right now, based on what we've seen traffic-wise, that's averaging about $30 per incident to be submitted to the system. That's just to give you a cost. There are some other alternatives like C-click Fix, which comes in at around $10,000 plus a setup fee plus tax, which puts it at about $14,000. It's a much more robust system. It's a much more robust system. And I can show you what that looks like. The town of Queen Creek uses it. Several municipalities are using it, coming on board. They were eventually acquired by Civic Rec, which is a really big company. That provides a lot of different software as a service for local governments. And then there's there's some other options for three one one. And I just kind of wanted to show you the the difference between the two. So then we can kind of move forward and continue our discussion here. So this is C Click Fix on the town of Queen Creek's Queen Creek's website. Again, it looks very similar. You get a map. You get current issues that are on the map. You can click on them and see the details. What it is, see the photo, how long the issue's been open, acknowledged, et cetera, et cetera. It's very similar. But you get the single pane of glass where when you go through and submit a request at a location. That you can see we have code violations and everything there is about it, general issues, business license issues, parks and recreation, so on and so forth, right? And it's it's quick and searchable. So if I wanted to search for dumping, here's illegal dumping. If I wanted to search for dogs barking, there's barking dogs. It's it's pretty fast, pretty robust. And and feature complete. And additionally, it gives detailed granular reporting. It has the ability to integrate into their API and weave it into our existing systems into our website. Tie it in the Facebook. There's a lot of additional feature sets that that come with this product. And this is a product that's matured over time. We originally looked at this product in twenty eighteen. And we put it in front of the budget committee, I believe in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. And at the time, we deemed it too costly. So that's what led us to seek an alternative and go with the revised product. And there are some other options out there too, three one one. This is a unified system provided by Acela. And that's something that Penalt County uses, City of Tempe uses. And again, it's something that is very robust product, provides multiple departmental levels. Very granular details, detailed level of level reporting, so on and so forth.
The price on that one?
A cell is a little different, so it ties into it. It's more, this is more in the line of what we're kind of looking at right now. So I've been in discussions with our finance director. We're looking at something that we can get that would be a good, again, single pane of glass for our financial software, for our code compliance, for our permitting. And then for our three one one, in addition to some of the other components that you can get with that. And that's kind of what that product is like. So it's very compartmentalized. They did they did separate out the three one one product. I haven't got pricing for that one yet. From my understanding, it's it's very similar to C Click Fix. It's depending on the size of the municipality. It's anywhere between ten to sixty thousand dollars. Ours would be more towards the bottom end of that. And again, it's it's very robust. So I just wanted to show that there's other products out there. What we're using is functional. It's had some shortcomings. We've worked through those issues. And really, it's just more to give you an update on what we're seeing, get what your thoughts are. My recommendation would be to to either finish out the life of this product until the end of the fiscal year and find something in the interim that we can go with, start a fiscal, start of the next fiscal year. Or continue to use this system and promote it through our PIO, through Facebooks, or whatever we need to do and get more people on board. My fear is is that this product with revised hasn't got a lot of attention. I've asked for when I can get this detailed level of reporting and I've been kind of just blown off or told that's going to be four months, six months. And now I'm being told they don't know it's to be determined. And it kind of seems like revised is kind of re gearing and they're they're either gonna come out with a new product and deprecate this product or something's coming. And it just leaves me a little uneasy sticking with the product. But we paid for it and it's it's up till the end of the year. So that's kind of where we're at on that. So I just want to be forthcoming and upfront and and let you know what our status is.
I did see Councilmember Hughes, you have your hand up. Did you want to ask a question?
Trenton, when I think I think it was in eighteen, I think it was the year we came on on council. And it was the the way it was requested from a public, from a person, citizen, was the kick, the click fix. Click. What is it? What was the three words?
It's okay. It's it's a tongue twister for me too. It's C Click Fix.
Yeah, that's the one that I I was, we always thought that it was going to go, that it was going to, it was going to come to. I'm a little concerned that we always take the lowest bid. When when we're seeing that people aren't going to get on it when it's out, it does, it doesn't populate. It's not showing. There are things that are not getting done. And I would really like us to see us step up and get a system that's already a proven system.
Right.
And and then and then advertise it. You know, I just think that we just keep floundering.
Uh, Councilmember Hughes, I I couldn't agree more. I definitely know we can do better. I think we fell short in this regard, for sure. You know, hindsight's twenty twenty. What we saw, we thought would be a decent product that we could get what we wanted, what we were looking to get out of it. And unfortunately, it fell short in a couple of areas. Again, like I said, it's still a functional system. We can still continue to use it. It's it's my professional recommendation that we don't. I think we should do it right. I think we should, you know, it's only, it's, I can't say it's only, that's ridiculous, but it's it's two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars of our taxpayers' money. Hard earned money that we spent trying to do this. And I think rather than just kicking the can and trying to mess with this any longer, we do them the service that they deserve.
Right. Exactly. Fix it. Yeah.
Okay. Eric and members of council, we recently sent you out a worksheet asking for council projects for the upcoming fiscal year. If this is something you would like to put us back in as a council recommended project, we can move forward with doing that kind of work to see that it is implemented within the budget. If it's something that you would like us to move forward with immediately, we can go back and look at council contingencies. I just wanted you to know you have those options. And thank you, Trent. You did a great job explaining where we are. Councilmember Anderson, you had your hand up next. Go ahead.
Uh, yes. I recall all this. It actually started in seventeen, two thousand seventeen. And Julia's right. We did talk about it at the budget in two thousand eighteen. And I always thought we were going down the C Click Fix road. But we decided to go with a cheaper model. The the thing, you know, the thing that click, C Click Fix has is that they're they're currently servicing over four hundred municipalities. If you look at our neighbors, Mesa's using it, Casa Grande's using it, Queen Creek's using it. So we've got a lot of local users here in Arizona that we could call on to, if we want to get more input on, you know, what they think about it. But, you know, for twelve, fifteen thousand dollars a year, I just can't see that being a big problem. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez, you have your hand up next.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you, first of all, for your honesty regarding the product and where we're at. I know it's not always easy to say that we had a shortcoming when it comes to technology, especially when there's so many products that are available. So I just wanted to say thank you for that, first of all. I agree that we, you know, shouldn't go with a second, the lowest bid bidder. I do like the idea of C Click Fix and the usability of that. I know personally, I've had citizens complain regarding wanting to file a complaint. And I direct them to the website just to find that it isn't working. And that's frustration on the customer side, or resident side, as well as from our side, as we want their voices to be heard. So I think that this is something that we need to continue through the rest of the fiscal year and then just ensure it's put as a council directive for the next fiscal year. Just with our current financial situation, I feel like that's something we need to make as a priority. But we are, you know, about halfway through, so we should be looking at that going forward.
Thank you.
Other, Councilmember Neil.
I just want to get something clear. Are you saying you want to scrap it now or you want to wait until the end of the budget to do it?
Our Councilmember Neil, my opinion is that we we paid the money. Ideally, we should use it until the end of the fiscal year, but not if it's going to be a frustration for our citizens. So at this point, it's stable and functioning. I don't I don't trust the reliability of the system to keep it running until the end of the year. So my opinion is we just stop using it and we we can revert to our web forms in the interim. Get the C Click Fix or whatever we determine to be the product of choice. I would recommend C Click Fix, to be honest. So for next fiscal year and move forward with that. That's my recommendation.
Does, oh, Councilmember Anderson.
Yes, I want just to add one other thing. The C Click Fix also has a mobile app. I think I think that would be great. You know, if I was walking downtown and I saw something and I've got my phone with me, I can I say, hey, Chris, go fix this pothole over here, you know? So I think that's a big plus for the C Click Fix.
Yeah, that's correct. Councilmember Anderson, it has its own app. It's available on the Apple Store as well as the Android Play Store. It is brandable as well, so we can utilize our new nice looking branding on that app. And it also has a community that comes with it as well, where there's a community forum as well as a community chat. Where you can, citizens can engage each other as well, so.
I was going to ask, is it possible that fix has an option where we could try it, like enter into a mid-year contract to try it out so that way we can gain some data and feedback prior to the finalized next year fiscal budget?
Madam Mayor, I'm glad you brought that up. That's something I neglected to mention. Yes, they do. It's a hundred day trial. And you can go through and it's it's fully featured. The only thing they don't let you demo is the app. They'll they'll provide you a link to a demo app that you can go see how it works and it'll basically show you how it's going to work, but they won't provide the custom app for the hundred day trial. And as well as as the app, the app, it integrates with our GIS, our GIS mapping tool. So we can pull in some of our layers that we might have for utilities, sewer water, building infrastructure, things like that into the map overlays that the citizens see as well.
Is there any way that we could get them to add that app component, even if it was part of, you know, a cost?
In what way, Madam Mayor?
We had that hundred day trial, but it included everything except for the app. What would it take to get access to the app with understanding on their behalf that we were trying this out for our community to see how it would work with our citizens?
So what they do is they do provide us a demo app, but it doesn't supply the branding component. And it's it's more of demo data. It won't tie into what we test on the other end of the system. They outright outright won't link that together because their developers custom compiled that application to deploy it. So they have to build it. They have to pay the fee to the App Store and the Google App Store to be able to even be able to publish it. So that's the reason behind why they they won't just give us a demo version of that, or I'm sorry, a trial version of that. They will provide us with a demo of the app, so we can see its full functionality.
That makes sense. Councilmember Hughes?
Again, a concern I want to bring up is that we want to make sure that we don't put a hundred, a hundred day demo and then stop it and have an interruption of service before the next year. I think that that will frustrate the citizens also, because I believe it's going to win this up and running. You'll see people start using it. So I don't want to, if you're going to use the hundred day before the end of the year, do it a hundred days prior to the beginning of our new year.
That is a valid point. Another option that we do have is we do have contingency funds available within our council for council to consider. If that's a direction we wanted to discuss. Vice Mayor?
Trenton, in your opinion, do you feel like the cost of the see it, click it, fix it versus the system that we have now that's not functioning the way we want? And requiring staff to do more work than we had anticipated when we went with that program? Do you feel there might be some balance because staff won't have to do so much back work to basically do what we thought the program was going to do for us if we switch over to the click it, fix it, see it, whatever program?
That's a very good question, Vice Mayor. Yes, I do. I think with the additional functionality that we gain with the C Click Fix product, we're going to be able to save some of the staff time that we were using messing around with revised. We'll be able to generate reports dynamically, get them directly to staff. It'll require less interaction from staff to manually going into the system, manually generating reports. The majority of the system on the back end is automated for that purpose with workflows as well. So if something needs to hit multiple departments, the system automatically does it. If our street superintendent goes and flags his portion of that of that ticket complete, it moves on over to to our Parks and Recreation Department if need be. And then they facilitate the rest of that request, right? So I do. I think that there's definitely, when you weigh the cost benefit, it's definitely there with C Click Fix.
Councilmember Anderson?
Well, based on what Trent told us here tonight, I think we ought to go ahead, take the money out of our contingency fund. And start in with C Click Fix as fast as we can.
I second that one.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Hang on, you're having some technical difficulty.
All right, I just wanted to see how much we have left in the contingency fund. If we have that money allocated to the projects that this brought.
Okay. Ms. Garcia, how much do we have left in our contingency fund? And then how much is already allocated towards other projects, if any? And at this time, since we have a request and a secondary request, perhaps the more appropriate would be to put this on a next agenda. But I'm going to.
All right. Thank you for asking that question. So far to date, council has spent twenty thousand dollars on the junior parada. And they have spent fifteen thousand dollars on the certificate of necessity, the CON study with the James Vincent Group. The town council does have a remaining forty six thousand dollars available in town council contingency. And there is at this time no earmark on that forty six thousand dollars.
All right. Is the more appropriate motion at this point to come back at a next council meeting with this agenda item?
Um, you have right now, you have discussion approval, disapproval to discontinue the request and to revert to the former submission. But because we have that motion on the floor, you can direct Trent to be able to discontinue the use of revised and convert to a system after he goes to bid that would be both logical and within the means that council would like to see. And Trent can take care of that internally.
Okay. Would that then come back before council prior to, or would that be the only motion that would be needed?
That would be the only motion that would be needed because it would be a dollar amount that would be under the town manager's authority level. Council's authority level is at fifty thousand.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hughes? You're muted.
Sorry. I make a motion to, to, to. I don't exactly know how long.
Before you motion, could I pause you because? Before you motion, could I pause you because?
Mayor has her hand raised. I apologize, but okay.
Trenton, I just wanted to ask and make sure that we verify that we if there is any software inefficiencies that we come across on the click it, fix it, whatever that we don't run into the same because clearly we thought the current program would suit our needs. We've realized that it doesn't. I want to know if there's going to be some kind of I don't even like I don't like a warranty for lack of me not trying to me not being able to figure out that word that I'm looking for, but something that would if it's not what we think it's going is and it's not going to do what we think it's going to do. Can we get out of our contract earlier and get some type of refund? You know, based on how if we only use it for three months and it's not going to do what we want it to do and they can't make it do what we want it to do. Can we get some of our money back? And then if we discontinue the current system, will we get any type of refund for the unused portion of that time as well?
Vice Mayor, yes, good question. So first, in regards to the see click fix, there is a service level agreement that comes with that. So yes, we would be able to get a prorated amount refunded back for whatever we didn't use. We use three months of the twelve months, then we give a prorated refund less the setup fees. They will not refund setup fees. In regards to revise, that was a in order to get the rate that we got, it was a three year purchase to give a discounted rate. So they'll let us out of our current contract because this is only this we're only coming in the year two, but they won't refund what we've paid up to this point.
Okay, thank you. Council member Hughes, you may proceed with your motion. I appreciate. I just wanted to make sure everybody's voice.
I agree. I make a motion to let Trent to use our council contingency fund that we have left. It's forty, what was it Lisa, forty? Whatever the the council contingency fund and give Trenton the ability to stop revise and to look into quick or to come into a contract with see click fix.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Item B is resolution number eighteen eleven dash twenty two. This is discussion approval, disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona. Approving a town core infill district plan request for four fifty four North Penal Parkway Avenue, Florence, Arizona, APN two hundred dash forty seven dash zero four five zero. And at this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Maricela Benitez, and I would also like to thank Dr. Jason Wheaton for attending this evening in the audience.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor and members of the council, let me share my presentation real quick. Tonight, we are here for an infill incentive district request by Wenton Dental. The representative is Associate Architects. They're one who are actually designing this. The infill incentive request is for parcel at four five four North Penal Parkway Avenue. This is across from Mount Athos. It is currently zoned highway business commercial or B two. And the developer, Mr. Wen, is looking to turn this lot into dentist office. Now they are putting in this infill incentive request in order to reduce the parking requirement set by the development code. The town core infill incentive district plan is a special document that helps encourage new developments and revitalize vacant properties. This current property is located within that set infill district that's in the plan and it sits on Highway seventy nine. For the infill incentive district, we asked the applicant to send in a letter of request, which was attached in the staff report. And then staff will go through and review and put together presentations for the planning and zoning commission and the town council, as this is all it requires, does not require a public hearing. Now, the overall project itself is for a new dental site. The building will be two thousand four hundred ninety four square feet. You will have access points on Penal Parkway or Highway seventy nine, and you will also have an access point on Ruggles Street. Now, the code requires that a medical office or something that falls under that category is must meet a one space per one hundred gross square feet. With this building, that would require twenty five spaces for the lot. Now, this request is looking to reduce that to fourteen spaces. Why we're looking at fourteen spaces is the business area that's we want to look at is what's actually going to be used by the people in the building. We want to exclude spaces such as restrooms, break rooms, closets, hallways, all that extra space. And we want to take into consideration the net floor space or what's going to be used. Some of that, including your dentist chairs or the lobby. So X-ray rooms and the like, those places will be used more by people. Now, one way they will help make that fourteen spaces more reasonable is appointment times. Make sure to reduce the number of people actually at the building and their employee shifts time. So we limit who is there. Dr. Wen has explained that they will get six employees at one time, and that's that's what they have currently. Now, the business area that we have for this building or what we got from their plans that they submitted was about one thousand four hundred and twenty seven point two five square feet. And putting that to the parking code from the development from our development code, we're looking at about fourteen fifteen spaces. So that falls under what they're asking for. This is just an outlook of what the floor plan will look like. They're looking at six operatories because currently their business here in Florence only has four, and they found that that is no longer meeting what they need to support their patients and their newcomers. With that, staff has looked into this request and found that it does not have a negative overall impact. The owner is looking at who's going to be there and they're limiting who will be there at what time. They have also come up with the option of using on-street parking in order to free up spaces for patients. We've also found that it is within the infill district. And the property being re redeveloped into a business that'll support Florence is something that is very in line with what staff and what the town encourages in terms of development. Now, town council moved to approve, disapprove the resolution. Understand, the planning and zoning commission did recommend approval on January twentieth, twenty twenty two. In terms of financial impact, the approval of the town in town core infill district request will allow the developer to continue with their plans and prevent the possibility of increased costs due to waiting redesigns of the building to meet their needs or to looking for a new site entirely. With that, my presentation is concluded, and I will now take questions. We have a representative here, Gabriel Torres from Associate Architects, in case there are questions specific to this and.
All right. Thank you so much. If you are a council member and you have a question, please go ahead and raise your hand at this time. Council member Neil.
Sorry, I seem to be slow tonight. Is this the same dentist office as in between the restaurant and the dollar store?
Yes, this is the same one.
Are there any other questions? Would the architect or the doctor wish to say anything at this time?
They are under the attendees IT.
But they could raise their hand if they wanted to.
Okay.
And I don't see them, so that's okay. All right, if there's no further questions with that, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution number one eight one one dash two two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, council members.
Item C is resolution number eighteen twelve dash twenty two. This is discussion approval, disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona. Designating Rebecca Jimenez, Finance Director of the Town of Florence, Arizona, as Chief Financial Officer designated to officially submit the expenditure limitation report for the town of Florence, Arizona. At this time, I'll call forward Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Town Council. I've tried to set my video, but it will not come on. I just want to this this motion here to adopt the resolution is an annual resolution. We have to statutorily appoint someone that will submit the expenditure limitation report. So this is for next fiscal year twenty two twenty three. So with that, I ask council to please adopt this resolution.
All right, council, with that, we need a motion.
I make a motion. We adopt resolution number one eight one two dash two two.
Second.
Second.
Seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And motion carries. Item D, ordinance number seven twelve dash twenty two. This is the first reading of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona. By amending title ten utilities, section fifty water by amending fifty dot zero two six striking section fifty dot zero five two and reserving the section for future use and amending sections fifty dot one two two, fifty dot one two nine, fifty dot one four five and fifty dot one five one. Again, Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
Again, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Town Council. From time to time, we go through the codes to make sure that we're following process or any new we're we're asking any new revisions to be made. And with this, we updated the water code as mostly on the administrative side. We amended section fifty point oh two six, and this is to repair our water leaks. They used to and I'm sorry, I have a typo in here. The old code stated ten days and we're asking for five days. And the reason we're doing this is for water condition purposes for and we also have new technology now that notifies the customers whenever they have water leaks. So there should be no issue getting information to the customer to allow them to get these repairs done without wasting a lot of money on water. If you just imagine that you had a broken water line somewhere in your yard and it was leaking for ten days, can you imagine the number of gallons that would be wasted or valuable resource of water? We also struck the utility improvement district assessment sales section because that really had nothing to do with utilities. The utility improvement district was a bonding issue and had nothing really to do other than to purchase the utility. So that is stricken from the code. The method of developing a water quality charge, we had some verbiage that was confusing. It should be not rate, but it should have said charge. So that was just a minor adjustment. And then it also gives a finance director the authority to develop and asked an estimated procedure and estimates on how to adjust customers' accounts. And that will be handled by the finance utility billing department. A portion of this is because it's a little bit cumbersome right now because we have two different departments involved in doing this. And it just makes more sense that we actually handle all the financial portion of this, the calculation, the adjustment. And then we correspond directly with the customer without having our utility staff having to talk to them and then they talk to us. So it just kind of clarifies things in general for us. And I will have the oversight of actually signing off on any adjustments that are being made if necessary. Hopefully, that'll be eliminated for the most part with our new meter meters that have been installed. They're so high tech and they report automatically into our system now. And so we can kind of jump on these things when they happen. And again, just kind of clarifying, the adjustments are going to be handled by the finance department. And then we'll modify the the refund process or adjustment process from sixty days down to thirty because there should be no reason why anyone should have a thirty day less than thirty days or I'm sorry, more than thirty days in an adjustment if they're being caught correctly. Of course, council, you know that from time to time, things happen and we'll have to use our best judgment on how these things are handled. And we normally do it with cooperation of Water Department, Administration and Legal. If there's any issues related to leak adjustments. And so the next section just provides consistency and repair time. And then on discontinuance of service, we this portion right here, we're adjusting a bit because normally any credits are returned to the customer. We're asking council if we can make that limit five dollars or more because every time we have to process a check, it is very costly for us, the administrative time, the paper to write a check, the mailing. By then you're over five dollars. So this way, if a customer does come back and request anything under five, we'll be more than happy to get it. But right now, what's occurring is we're getting a lot of checks bouncing back or through the mail to us that are undeliverable, the customers left, and they're very, very minor amounts. So this will just kind of clean that need to issue a check for a dollar, two dollars, up to five dollars. So that's what we're requesting. It's up to you, council, what you decide to do on this, but we felt that all of these adjustments are in the best interest for the town.
All right. Thank you very much for that detailed presentation. Are there any council members that have questions? I see council member Hughes, you have your hand raised. Go ahead, please.
Becky?
Yes.
Is it a possibility that for when a customer gets a a lower amount that we would not issue a check until it hits five dollars? And you keep a tally in the backside?
Yes, we do. We write it off into an adjustment account is what we do.
So instead of sending everything every time, you would just keep that adjustment on the on the paper on at work. And then when it gets to five dollars, you send a check.
Well, no, this would be on discontinuing services.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, there's no way we could go on with just five dollars because it costs a lot of money. No, this is just on discontinuation of services.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other council members with questions at this time? Seeing none moved, can we have a motion, please?
Just reading only.
Just reading.
Oh, goodness gracious. I wasn't looking at that screen. Sorry, I kept flipping. Thank you. That will come back. Next is discussion approval, disapproval of the appointment of the members to the town boards and commissions as follows. Appointment of Steve Navalah to the Board of Appeals with a term to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Appointment of Kathleen Lehman to the Community Services Advisory Board with a term to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Appointment of Steve West as the alternate to the Historic District Advisory Commission with a term to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Appointment of Kathy Adams and Dwayne Perlow to the Planning and Zoning Commission with terms to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Mayor, members of council, the clerk's office has advertised since November for these positions. These are the only advertisements we've received so far. These are the only advertisements we've received so far because there was not more than, um, two, because there was not more than once. One application for each seat, we brought forward the applications in order to go forward with having forums for each of the board. We currently still have vacancies on the Board of Appeals and on the, um, community service boards. If you know anyone who would like to serve, please send them our way. We're happy to get them. Filling out an application and, and getting started to serve on our boards. As with any expiring term, we ask that those members continue to serve until, um, the replacement has been filled. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Great, thank you very much for that. And I do want to say thank you for everybody who gives their time and effort to serve on boards and commissions. We really do appreciate your service and at this time, we need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve as stated.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. Item F is discussion approval disapproval of purchasing a new Vermeer vac unit for the amount not to exceed. One hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty cents. For the utilization of the utilities department.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Tonight's item may be a little confusing. I tried to make it clear, um, in the body. We currently have a machine, a Vermeer, um, vac machine. But unfortunately, because of the age. We have had constant repairs this last year. So I believe we spent over twenty-five thousand dollars. Between, um, ten thousand in repairs and we're fifteen thousand in rental costs. So the idea would be to buy a brand new one, where we would have essentially high reliability. And then back that up. So we would eliminate any, um, rental fees by having this machine. And using it periodically only when the other machine were to go down. Um, unfortunately, we use these machines almost every day. So we'll probably be back before ten years on purchasing another one. This is, this is, as we say, it's part of doing business. This is part of running a utility. And, um, this piece of equipment is, um. Uh, being able to have, be purchased off of a cooperative contract. Are there any particular questions I might be able to answer?
Uh, yes. What's this used for? You know, I'm sort of confused what a back machine is.
Okay, um, this machine essentially, think of it as a high pressure, like pressure washer. But it's used specifically for excavation. So oftentimes we'll excavate utilities. Um, service lines, main lines with this, especially as we get closer versus digging. And then accidentally hitting something and breaking something. Um, it, it will protect utilities that are not ours. If there is a gas line that's unmarked in the area. There's an electrical line or any type of dry utility. So this, this device is used essentially solely for excavation. Of existing water lines that would either be a main line, a transmission line, or a service line.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I answered my own question. Thank you, though.
All right, thank you so much. All right, seeing no more questions, we need a motion, please.
I make a motion as stated.
Motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. All right, our next item is our manager's report.
Mayor and council, thank you so much for allowing me to serve in interim capacity. Um, this is my first, uh, manager's report. I hope you found it interesting. If there's something else that you would like to see included in the report, please let me know. But at this time, I ha- I have received and filed the report and I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions at this time? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Garcia. Next is our department reports. Does any member of council have any questions regarding any items that are specifically on the department reports? All right, seeing no hands raised, I want to say thank you. And this is our second call to the public. At this time, call to the public is open. If you would like to speak, please go ahead and raise your hand. I do see one hand raised, however, I cannot see who's raising it. Um, it looks like Tabitha and Ian. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Again, sorry. Our children are being loud, I apologize. Um, I just had a question. I wanted to know what, what is involved in serving on the community service board?
So, serving on the community service board, services board, um. That falls under what used to be known as our Parks and Rec Commission. And they combined with the Library Use Board, the Senior Center. So everything that falls within that jurisdiction. What I can do is I will give direction to our interim town manager to go ahead and take the, um, boards that are open. As well as the complete and comprehensive town description of them. And go ahead and post out onto our Town of Florence Facebook page, as well as we can get that sent over to you since you requested it. Of what it is specifically, because I do not want to exclude anything.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Right, is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? All right, we'll close the second call to the public. Call to the council for current events only. Councilmember. Get to my list because I want to make sure I follow it in order. Councilmember Mendoza.
Well, I only have one thing. Um, I recently had to use. The nine-one-one system that we have. And after using it, I came out very frustrated. What I thought was an emergency, apparently, um. Apparently, they didn't think it was an emergency because they were trying to get me to use a different line. I don't know what's going on over there, so, um, I was really upset. Um, I've talked to some other. Members of the public that say they've had some issues where, you know, um, they've been hung up on. I, I think maybe we need to do an audit of the nine-one-one system. Maybe find out what's going on. Um, I know that we have some people that are out because of COVID, but. Um, I, I don't think that. What happened should be happening. That's about all I have.
Thank you. I do know that there have been some questions brought up prior. So I will support in working with Lisa and bringing back in front of all of council. Um, any information that you want to present. I understand there may be some changes with dispatch in general, so I feel that conversations and transparency is always good. So, let's get that on an agenda. Councilmember Neil.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, good job, Lisa.
Councilmember Hughes.
I just want to commend Lisa as quickly she's come out of the chute in how this meeting has been run tonight. And the, the information that we've been given from departments, uh, who's been, who's been very, very thorough. And it's run really well, so I applaud you, Lisa. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
I just want to echo Judy's sentiments and I completely agree. Otherwise, I have nothing.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes, I have been talking to Lisa over the last couple of days about, uh, getting a list of all the people who have a business license. Uh, I thought that would be something that would be on our website. People could go in and, and see who in town. Is a plumber or electrician or, you know, that are, that are licensed to do things in our town. And, and I find out that that's not readily available. So I would like to, uh. Uh, propose that we do make that readily available. And so I'm asking the council. Uh, or maybe Lisa, how should we approach this?
One thing I just want to add, I do know that we can generate a list of all businesses and business licenses. That are held within our town, um, because they do that yearly for the state of the town. However, I do agree that we should defer to Lisa. Because I'm not sure in regards to posting that out, or if people want their business licenses posted out. Ms. Garcia, would you please follow up with Councilmember Anderson and I?
I would, and I would just remind you that we have instructions to the interim clerk on the executive session where we can talk about your direction that you'd like me to take.
Okay, thank you so much.
Uh, one other thing that, uh, I would like to mention, uh, we've talked about code enforcement several times. I've been getting, getting, giving some thought about that. And I'd like to see us talk about that at a work session because. Uh, we have a lot of people that are enforcing codes. Each department has somebody working on code enforcement. And I'm just wondering if there's a better approach to that. Do we, can we centralize that? Or can we set up a task force for code enforcement? Because each of the departments are doing it. Some of it do very well, some aren't doing very well. Cause they don't have the manpower to do it. So I'd like to see us put that on a work session.
Okay, let's talk about that as Ms. Garcia just mentioned when we give her directions. I would also be interested to know because of the different departments and in regards to what specifically they're responsible for. Making sure that we're not overstepping and combining and having people that aren't, you know, educated, qualified in that certain area. Going into another area.
Well, yeah, and there's some overlap there, too.
Correct. So we can have that discussion, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Vice Mayor. Get some water. There we go. All right, um, so I just again wanted to reiterate for what I have to say tonight for call to the council. Thank you to everybody who is really making things happen in the events in the town of Florence. It really is. You know, Roger had mentioned in regards to some of the grants and fundings. Um, kudos to council, but really kudos to collaboration. It truly takes a team and it takes many different individuals. And working parts coming together to make anything happen. So we've been able to highlight Florence. In regards to all of the amazing things that are continuing to happen, as well as programs that are continuing to grow. We do have our home tour coming up, our classic cars, bikes on Main Street, as well as the continuation. They have the farmer's market. So again, amazing things are happening. I know that watching the legis- legislature is not on as an item that Jeff is speaking about tonight. But in my call to the council regarding current events, I do want to make sure that everybody is aware of House Bill twenty-six, seventy-four. It does have some potential negative and generational impacts on development in our state. For example, it eliminates single-family zoning in Arizona. Preempts municipalities and charter cities and all housing matters. Um, violates voter-approved general plans, the general plan statute, and the Voter Protections Act. It eliminates the citizen review process for residential and multifamily developments. Prohibits all zoning district regulations that restrict housing. Provides residential developers special treatment and the right to ignore local requirements. Such as setbacks, maximum heights and requirements regarding building materials, exteriors, roofs, patios, garages, landscapes. Common areas, open areas, parking and architectural elements. It prohibits any lot covering maximum and side setbacks. Requirements greater than five feet on single-family lots prohibits planning commissions from reviewing housing projects. Getting community input and providing recommendations to local councils. Um, overrides all local adopted residential building codes. And as a result, municipalities would be required to follow generic national building codes. That do not apply to the locality's needs and geotechnical conditions. And again, has the potential to disrupt state or municipal economic development plans by converting commercially zoned property. Um, for economic development for by right housing without regard for the carefully coordinated economic development plans. So when we're always saying, you know what, you need to reach out and talk to somebody. This is where you would want to contact the state committee members and at the legislature. And make your voice heard regardless of what your view is. Just make sure you're educated on, you know, what's going on at all levels in government. So that is my two items I wanted to speak on tonight. We do have an executive session that we will be, um, going to, and then we will, um, adjourn from there as well. So with that, we need a motion.
Make a motion that we go into executive session.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and that motion carries.